I'd like to call this special meeting Windsor Board of Education Tuesday, January 28th, 2025 to order. First item on the agenda is public forum on the superintendent's proposed budget for 2025, 2026. Limited time is thirty minutes. Is there anyone in the audience here in the boardroom who'd like to address the board? Is there anybody online with the hand raised? Any questions online? Without objection, I'm going to close the public forum on the budget. This motion to adjourn by Mr. Lockhart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Halleck, Mr. Wilson, Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Sorry, I'm thoroughly having trouble.
All right. Motion carries eight zero zero. We are adjourned at six sixteen and the next item is going to be the Finance Committee. I'd like to call the June 28th, 2025 Finance Committee meeting of the Windsor Board of Education to order. Would you please stand for a pledge in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you see it? At this time, we have the audience divisors considering based off what just happened under the public forum. I am without objection from the committee, if one could be expedient about this, I'm not going to read the script. Is there anyone online?
There is one standing.
Do they have their hand up, which will be recognized?
Not.
All right. Does anyone in the boardroom wish to be recognized? Anyone who wishes to be recognized? Anyone who wishes to be recognized? Seeing and hearing none, without objection, we will close all these divisors. Any objection? So ordered. Next is the discussion of the 2025, 2026 budget on a level set with this with this committee. We will not be parroted to. We will be looking at the budget line by line and we are here to ask questions. I am going to stick with the point that I am asking everyone to bring. If you have questions that you wish to be answered at this meeting, they need to be in my files so that the team can be prepared. If you bring questions the day of, that is fine. If the team is prepared to answer them, you are welcome to answer when that portion of the budget process comes up. I want to make sure that we do an orderly process. Any emails that are sent with questions must be sent to Dr. Hill, to Sally Brown, and myself, no one else. So therefore, when the information comes out, it's coming out at one time, at the same time, to everybody. Is there any discussion on what I just stated? Hearing none. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this year, as we begin our budget process, some of you who are listening online, those of you here in the boardroom, you heard me present the superintendent's proposed budget last week. And so what we're going to do over the next three and possibly four meetings is to go through the budget in its entirety. The purpose for doing this, I feel the need to stress this this year, is so that the community and everyone working in the district, along with the board, has the opportunity to see what the budget is comprised of, and there are opportunities to ask questions. And people, so people are clear in their understanding of, you know, what Windsor Public Schools needs financially in order to run and to see that there are there are no hidden pockets of money. Just want to make sure my community understands that clearly, there are no hidden pockets of money. What we ask for is what we need to run the district and you will see what we have, you will hear questions asked, we will answer those questions. Also understand that the budget is online and already posted there, so you can look at the budget at your leisure, at any point and any time, not just during these meetings. And please feel free, anyone in the community, to come into the board chambers over the next three meetings, possibly four, and hear us talk about how the budget is made up. What we're going to do as we proceed, we're going to call, I'm going to call each portion of the budget by department to come and present itself to the board. I'm doing my introductory piece now, I am not going to read my letter, but suffice it to say, in preparing this budget, I kept in mind, as I do each year, that I want to ensure that we stay true and we hold fidelity to our instructional focus. We are a school system, so our job is to educate the children of Windsor Public Schools, and that's what we're going to do first, and resources will be geared toward that at end. Also, as a resident of the town myself, I am well aware of the revaluation that occurred last year and impacted the town. The town decided to split the new costs to homeowners in terms of taxing into two years. So we had last year's payment and we have this year's payment was coming due. So I was very aware of that and kept that in mind as I prepared this year's budget. There are no new asks in this budget. There are significant costs that are pretty much contractual between employees, the six bargaining units, their contractual obligations in terms of salary and the benefits that correspond. That alone is almost four and a half percent by itself. And then utility costs, as many of you have noticed in your own homes, just imagine the cost that we're incurring here for an entire district, transportation costs. And we have had some significant medical costs to some of our staff members, which is has increased our insurance bill incredibly. That, we're going to take care of our staff, so that is not the question, but you will see that we have a significantly increased bill when it comes to the insurance. So I want to keep in mind as we go through this budget, that we focus on questions of things, if there's something we don't understand, that the questions are focused on what we don't understand, and we will endeavor to explain it as best we can. So.
Before you begin, Dr. Hill, if I may, to answer the questions of the board members the last time, you wanted to know how we was going to break this out. If you look at it, today is going to be very aggressive and then next meeting will be more of the instructional services side of the deliverables within the district. So today, we're going to be discussing the school budgets, we're going to be discussing CTE, we're going to be discussing intersclassical sports, we're going to be discussing continual education, we're going to be discussing district policy and planning, we're going to be discussing employee personal services and fiscal management. Those are the things that we're going to be discussing tonight. All right? And then, as you can see, we left the fifth for instructional services. We left the eleven for operational pieces of actually operating the school district, the physical plant, transportation, et cetera. And then it's my, it's my hope that we do not need to meet on Thursday the thirteenth because we're going to be very, very succinct and we're going to be exhaustive in how we, these questions are going to be answered and not waste any time, but at the same time, make sure we're being very efficient. And I believe everyone brought into that vision before we came into this meeting. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So also, something that I did differently is you asked Ms. Batchelder to share in these, the meeting agenda, the specific operational budgets for each school. I just want to be clear for those looking at this, this is absolutely not the amount that it costs to run these respective schools. This is simply the amount of money that the principals and their staff have access and control of within their building. So, no, we are not running Oliver Ellsworth, for instance, on seventy-four thousand dollars. Okay? I just want to make sure that's clarified. But I did want everyone to know the operational budget that the principals and their teams actually have access to and control of. The rest of the budget is controlled in central office, Ms. Batchelder, our chief operations officer. So these small amounts are what the schools actually deal with. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would call forward my four elementary principals, unless you have a different process and.
I will.
Okay.
You, sir.
So my expectation is to have Mr. Gruber from Oliver Ellsworth, Mr. Mahalco from Paquannick, Ms. Lee from Clover, and Mr. Gagne from JFK come up together as elementary schools. As you see, they don't have large operational budgets, but I wanted to give the board the opportunity to ask any specific questions, you know, about their respective sites. And again, in keeping with what you said, we're not reading to you, we're not parodying to you, so they are here to answer questions for their respective buildings.
All right.
And I will deal to the principals at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to have you here.
Happy to be here.
All right. We have the principals before us. It was the pleasure to board. Excuse me, of the committee, I am not chairing the board, I am chairing the committee. I'm very mindful, public. Panos, I see you have your hand up.
I do?
Yeah.
All right, I'll have my hand up. Let's see. And, um, so do I understand it? All we, all you want is questions regarding what, what's in here or is there?
Whatever's in their site, if you have any questions about what's been presented in their site.
Okay.
You can ask questions about that and then just, you know, as long as we're in that ballpark, please.
Okay.
Or should I say at the plate? I'm not going to say ballpark, at the plate.
Let's see. I, I did have.
If there's anyone else ready, I give Mr. Panos a chance to gather his thoughts.
I would just say, page one here, you say, Oliver Ellsworth, Paquannick, towards goals, toward our goals to date. You, the second bullet item, piloted Bookworms literacy program in building thinking classrooms to enhance student discourse and problem solving. Maybe you could, maybe you could just elaborate a little bit. These are two different programs. Are they compatible? This is one of the things that, you know, like building, for example, building thinking classrooms is typically something which emphasizes method and not memory, whereas when I, when I look up piloted Bookworms, there is a lot of information that is simply learned here. So there, it comes, it comes out a different way. Just what, what is your experience with this? Is it, is there any conflict between the two? Is this confusing?
Yeah, so you can hop into, because we only have one building thinking classroom that is joining in with the Oliver Ellsworth pilot, and thank you for allowing this road to do that. But building thinking classrooms is not a program, it's, it's an approach, it's a conversational approach for the students that ensures that there's discourse amongst the kids, gives them a chance to tackle a problem, work together, try to solve it. Whereas Bookworms is a resource that we are using for the curriculum, so is much more involved because it is the backbone to our literacy block, the ninety man block. But building thinking classrooms is a way for students to think about the curriculum in a critical way, allow them to have student discourse and come up with responses based on that.
And that's in a math focus.
Yeah.
The Bookworms is, is language arts.
Yep.
And the building thinking classrooms, the math.
Right. Okay.
I mean, I certainly wouldn't say they contradict each other. They're, they're both having students think, they're both having students to have discourse, so it's not like there's a conflict between the two programs, but they're very different.
And the Bookworms comes from the state mandate where we had to have some type of program.
Yep.
And that's what we're pirating.
Right. All right. There's, yeah, that's the.
Would you like to?
Yeah, if I could, Paul, Mr. Panos, if I could just.
Would you like to follow up, Mr. President?
Yes, if I could just, we do have a little bit of a description of Bookworms as well in one of my, my last question, question five. And the other question is, I know Bookworms is being piloted, is it two classrooms in each school, in each grade level?
Each grade.
We have one in third grade each.
Yep. Right. So.
So I have six teachers.
A one in two and three.
And one in third, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Panos?
I just had, let's see, I did, I don't have any specific.
Mr. King, Mr. Williston, and Mr. Halleck, if you want to chime in, just raise your hand, I can see the hands up on the screen and I'll recognize you. Mr. Panos?
No, I don't have anything specific there. There are other questions which have to do with salaries, but it's not.
That's not part of this particular site. Appreciative, thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Ketter?
Thank you. I just have a question. When you have teachers who are out, you have substitute teachers in your school, what happens when you run out of substitute teachers? You call other teachers. Who do you decide who gets called to teach for that class? And where do you get them from?
It varies, building by building. Like today, I taught, I was in library because there needs to be someone there for library for a little while, so I taught classes. It depends on, we have a rotation in our, in our school, so we don't pull the same teachers if there aren't enough subs or enough interventionists. We have a rotation, we have a schedule.
Okay, so it's all even, so students don't lose.
Okay.
It's even all the way across. Okay. Thank you.
It's not different.
All right. Any other questions for elementary principals? Any other questions? Any other questions? Ask them a third time. Any other questions? Dr. Hill, anything? Or are we all set?
Thank you very much. If there are no more questions at this time, then this is why I brought them up together, because it's pretty much the same format.
Right.
Twos and twos. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Okay, so this time, I'm going to call up Principal Jorgensen, if she can speak. If not, whoever can speak from Sage Park Middle School. She has been under the weather and, no, jokes, we want to make sure you live, trying to keep you alive.
Well, thank you for being here.
Miss Baldness, you guys will come next to her, please. Thank you. You, Mr. Fisher? So again, just, you know, I'll bring your attention to the operational budget, one hundred eighty-four thousand for Sage Park, and Ms. Jorgensen and her team are here to answer any specific questions you may have about Sage Park.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good to have you here.
It's good to be here. Don't make me laugh, don't make me laugh. Good to be here.
So we have Sage Park before us. I will open it up to the board, as well as to the three board members online. Is there any questions for Sage Park Middle School, based off of what they presented on pages five, six, and seven? Any questions for Sage Park Middle School in regards to pages five, six, and seven? Looking to my left because there's no one to my right. Any questions? Mr. Panos?
I was asking a similar question. We talked about here.
Bless you.
So the second, there's toward our goals today, part of page five, let's see. We have, the second bullet is. we have, um, the second bullet is, uh, so where are we here? Page five, um, so, began adapting the tenets of disciplinary literacy for the main content area, uh, and the second to last one is implementation of Building Thinking Classroom, Building Thinking Classroom, um, so, um, these two programs are also part of the major two thousand and five, twenty-six school year work. You see them in the, in the, uh, at the bottom of the page, continue developing disciplinary literacy, and the next one is monitor the implementation and impact of BTC. And the same question I have is, are the, are these two programs, or whatever you call them, of teaching, consistent with each other? And they say here, disciplinary literacy seems to emphasize learning, a lot of materials, whereas BTC emphasizes teaching how to think. So maybe you're gonna give the same answers before, uh, uh, on top of these two programs, there's also the implementation of district-wide instructional wheel, North Star we have, uh, which is critical thinking. So the, yeah, let's just put it in one for, you know, are, are these three programs compatible, along with the existing programs of teaching and MTSS framework on? It appears to be a lot of competing programs here for the staff to implement, so...
So no, they are not competing against each other, um, and they are all aligned. So quick explanation, I'll start with what, what we already know, and what we should already know. So you have MTSS, which is our multi-tiered, um, system of supports framework. MTSS allows us, in our building, to take a look at all of our students, all of them. Tier one, which is a part of MTSS, usually encompasses eighty percent of your teaching population, or your students. Um, tier one deals with teaching everyone, um, appropriate instructions, high-leverage instructions within the classroom. So if you, when you walk into, and when you walked into our classrooms at Sage Park, what you saw within the classroom was tier one instruction. It is instruction that all of our students receive. The next level is tier two. That's when our students are struggling to meet and, and, and acquire instruction or learning through tier one, then we have to provide them with support. Now granted, as you transition from tier one, tier two, to tier three, all of this is done with data, right? It's, so it's not a guessing game. We have data, we have systems in place that allows us to identify students' entry point in and out of these tiers. And so within tier two, you have more, um, support within small group. Um, ideally, only fifteen percent of your population should be receiving tier two instruction. When tier two instruction doesn't work, and the student needs more individualized support, that student then is navigated to tier three. Ideally, only five percent of your population should receive tier three supports. And again, these students, it's fluid, right? As they make their way from tier one, tier two, tier three, we hope that kids with tier three respond to the level and the types of in- instruct, interventions that we're providing for them, um, and then they can make their way back up. But that's all done with, with data and criteria, entries in and out. So that is building wide, right? That is a, a process that is constantly in motion. We have intervention classes at Sage Park that provide support and services for our tier two and tier three kids, this is what our interventionist does. Teachers within the classroom also provide intervention supports for tier two kids that they know that, that we've already identified. So it's constantly providing, adapting instruction, and meeting kids at their need level. So that's MTSS. Everyone benefits from MTSS, because it's all a matter of making sure that we give kids all that they need. In education, we cannot be one-dimensional. I heard at one point somewhere, somewhere along the line, you have to have at least seven touchpoints with something before it becomes part of who you are, or it is what you do, right? So when we start to talk about BTC and disciplinary literacy, disciplinary literacy is new to us with intention at Sage Park. And when I say new to us with intention at Sage Park, when I explain it to you, you'll say, "Oh, this doesn't seem like it's something new." We actually stole it from the high school, so thank you. So the high school, um, had really good success with disciplinary literacy last year. And so, I, I'm all about if we, if something's working, then we're gonna definitely try to adapt it. Disciplinary literacy, it's all about, um, teaching our kids to think, to read, um, and to respond to texts based on the specific content that they're working with. You may have heard the phrase like, "Think like a mathematician, read like a mathematician." So what that does is, it's very intentional and working with teachers, very intentional about working with teachers in these core content areas to, not only when they're teaching the content, but to also teach kids to navigate the content for what it is. When you're working with, um, in science, teach our students about how to bold text features for non-fictional texts. Bold words mean something, um, graphs mean something. How do you read a graph in a science, um, in a science textbook or science text? And making them work with authentic, um, pieces of literature within the content. And we would be expecting the same thing from math teachers and history teachers, right? How do you read the, um, the Constitution? Well, they can't read it because it's in script. But how do you read the Constitution when it's in print writing and all of the above? Um, how do you navigate those texts? So it's teaching and working with our teachers to refocus ourselves and be intentional about how our students are accessing those texts. And vocabulary is a huge part of that. It, it's not taken away from anything, and it's not competing with anything, right? We're still deliver, delivering instructions through our graduate release model, but this is adding and it's enriching instruction. Now Building Thinking Classroom, I spoke about this last school year, um, when I was here, and it was something that, um, our math teachers had adopted. So Building Thinking Classroom is basically about having our kids, um, become critical thinkers, right? It's, it's, some of the tenets involve working on non, non-vertical, working on non-vertical surfaces, um, randomizing groups, but the most important part is the tasks, the tasks that students are supposed to do. So no longer are they sitting there with a scripted outcome. Students are working with their peers, they're engaged in discourse about how to solve problems. And if you've made your way around our classrooms, um, because there is, we require teachers to do at least a minimum of two per week at Sage Park in the math classes. And so they usually get this done, sometimes for, um, beginning of the classwork. It's not taken away from any other instruction, but what it does is, it is pushing our kids to think critically about math and to have discussions with their peers. And the teachers serve as the facilitator as they make their way throughout the room, listening to kids, giving them hints, et cetera. So how does that all apply? As we think about the North Star and what it is that we want for all of our kids, everything that I just described, between multi-tiered system of supports, Building Thinking Classroom, discipline literacy, it all falls under the North Star in pushing our kids to become critical thinkers, having our, our teachers align themselves to ask questions that requires our kids to think more, and then to also give our kids feedback that then allows them to reflect and then even come back and ask us more questions. Everything is aligned, it is not competing, um, I, I value teaching time a lot. And so whenever things are introduced, I always evaluate it as far as, is this going to help and enrich what it is that we're doing, or is this become a distractor? I do believe that Dr. Haiti and the team has done a really good job with aligning what it is that we're doing so that we're not all running in different directions. Everything that we do can go back to the North Star, um, and everything I just mentioned. I hope that helps to answer your question.
Well, how much, um, direct instruction do the students receive? Then you say eighty percent of the time, or, uh, from the teacher?
Explicit instruction is the foundation of, of everything that we do. Uh, so, while we do BTC and, and disciplinary literacy and all of that good stuff, our format for delivering instruction is still the graduate release. And so the graduate release format requires that, when we are teaching kids things, the first thing that we have to do is be explicit, teach the students exactly what it is that they need to know. From teaching them what it is that they need to know, then the next step is, do it, have the kids practice it under your supervision. And so, once they're done, practice it under their supervision, the last process, and I'm being very, you know, succinct, the last process will be to release them so that they can do it on their own. And so there is a lot of explicit instruction, as a matter of fact, it is required, um, and kids can't learn unless you're explicit about what it is that they need to know. There's no learning by osmosis that I'm aware of.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. That's, uh, osmosis, that makes things too easy. Too easy. Thank you.
All set, Ms. Pennals?
Yeah.
Looking online, I'm not seeing any hands. I see now Mr. Halleck's hand. Mr. Halleck, recognizing you, sir.
Uh, thank you.
Can you find my page?
I just wanted to ask about, uh, about special education and how, and how that program was answered, and what you're doing to continue, uh, moving, moving forward with that in this budget.
Mr. Halleck, that, that's a special ad question. So what we're gonna do is put that in the parking lot, and that will be addressed under that site, sir.
Okay, my apologies.
Nope, 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 it's a valid question, just want to make sure we stay within the structure. Any other, any other questions, Mr. Halleck?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions in the boardroom? I am seeing and hearing Nova questions from the boardroom and online. With that being said, Ms. Jorgensen and your team, thank you very much.
Yeah, tell me twice.
Recognizing Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Sage Park team, Ms. Jorgensen. So at this time, I'm gonna call forward, um, Principal Parker from Windsor High and whomever he wishes to bring up with him. And they're going to address Windsor High, as well as you see on the agenda here, um, the CTE department, and Mr. Fulton will come forward to help talk about the interscholastic athletics.
All right. All right, so we, we heard the order, so, right now, we are addressing Windsor High School. Once we are finished addressing Windsor High Su, High School, I will let us know when we're going to CTE, and then I will let us know when we're transitioning to interscholastic sports. So at this point, we have the high school team here, and we are going to be discussing pages...
Eight?
Eight, nine, eight and nine in the book. With that being said, are there any questions for the high school at this time from the board? Excuse me, from the committee? Mr. Pennals?
Yeah, thank you. Um, page eight, let's see. Let's see, Toward Our Goals, the center group here, um, uh, we have, um, the last bullet, we talked about Wednesday Walk Series. Now, um, can you tell us, um, you know, how do these, you say, what are the Wednesday Walk Series, um, that were implemented, and how do they compare with the faculty walk crews that were for instructional feedback that have been done for some years now?
Yep.
The same thing?
No. So essentially, what we tried to do was, the Wednesday Walk Series, it's, it's actually guided by administrators, um, but we do learning walks with the teachers. And so what that does for the teachers is not evaluative, however, they get an opportunity to understand what is being looked for from our, actually, uh, from our walkthroughs.
Oh, you mean other, excuse me, teachers are the ones who do the walkthrough?
Teachers do the walkthroughs, along with administrators. So the purpose of that is, is they're able to understand what we're looking for when we go into classrooms and do our walkthroughs and, uh, our observations, and then also they're able to, you know, see what other teachers are doing in terms of strategies, and then also, they may leave notes and give kudos and things like that, um, in terms of feedback. And then I know in some of the groups that I've walked in and, and some of the conversations I've had with other people, those, those, uh, visits have prompted, uh, as we do like debriefs after, they prompt conversations for people to go back and actually either add to their practice or make modifications to lesson planning, things of that nature. But again, nonevaluative, an opportunity for, you know, our folks to kind of get a first eye view and understanding what we're actually looking for, but in real time.
And how does that compare with the faculty walkthroughs that you were talking, that I've heard about?
So some of those same... Yep, so those, we literally use the same components from those actual walkthroughs. So the things that they're looking for, they're looking for it as teachers, but it's the same ones that we use as administrators.
The, well, when the administrators go through, i- is it an evaluative thing?
Not in that series, no. So you're talking about, we do use our, uh, our observation series, so when we talk about, uh, we use Vector as a, as a platform now, um, that's when you get into your informal observations, your formal observations, and there's a process for that that's separate from the walkthroughs.
How frequently are these walkthroughs, I know it's every Wednesday, but...
No, Wednesday walks are once a month.
Oh, once, oh, once a month.
Yep, once a month.
And the, and the, um, the faculty walkthroughs, they're what, in...
It depends on the cycle that a person's in. You're a newer teacher, um, you know, you have up to three, and then you can go, I mean, you can do as many as you need to do based on the situation, but...
Okay. Under, uh, major, on the third group here, major twenty-five, twenty-six school year work, uh, second bullet, Student Extracurricular Success Plan, Academic Monitoring, and Increased Academic Celebrations in the Center, so, uh, could you explain that? Is that similar to, uh, anything comparable to the Athletic Department's Continued Support and Development of Academic Monitoring System on page ten, which is different?
It's, yep, so, and, and he can chime in if need be, but it was, um, part of some ongoing conversations we have been having around student athletes, and looking really to just move beyond being, um, eligible and compliant. You know, we're thinking about the future for a lot of the students that want to go on and, you know, play, um, you know, be student athletes in college and things like that, and there's, you know, there's real commitments that move beyond, you know, just being eligible to play. Um, so what we had talked about in terms of athletics is really monitoring those students closely. And so in terms of, like, the, the monitoring, you know, you could easily look at a student and say, "You know what, you're eligible to play, that's fine." But now we're looking deeper and saying, "You know what, where, what skills is this student needing support in? What subject areas does student need support in?" And then we can do some interventions where it might be, you may still have practice, but we may pull you for that first half to go and get some tutoring or some support, or mandatory study halls. Those are the, the extensions we were talking about. Now that being said, the conversation, uh, you know, derived from talking about student athletes, but then evolved into, you know, what about, you know, our other extracurriculars and those students that, you know, are in the arts, or students that are in, you know, the band and things like that? How do we monitor all those students just to make sure we're supporting them in a way? Because it's after hours, right? So when a lot of our students, um, you know, do perform well, uh, it still can be a little stressful and trying to, trying to maintain those things, so we're paying attention to them. Um, most of our students that, you know, obviously traditionally do well, they, they kind of maintain that, but we want to look a little closer, and those, there's different data points that we can look at, uh, from an academic standpoint. We also utilize the, uh, multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, um, with the lens from, uh, academics, and then also what we would call behavioral, um, but that could be anything, that could be behavioral, it could be something that just could be life experience that may be impacting the student and impacting learning gaps. But there's different indicators and, um, you know, things that we can look at and kind of make sure those transfer not only during the day, but then also kind of making sure we are paying attention to those students after school.
Okay. So, uh, uh, so that's a, that's what you call the e- extracurricular success, uh, it's, uh, well, who runs that? All of you, just, uh, do you have...
So everyone would have to add different components.
Excuse me?
I said everyone would have different, different components, so you'll have different subgroups. And again, so MTSS during the day, there's different subgroups, and then those, that information of those data, data points can be shared, um, you know, with Athletic Department, who could, uh, you know, talk to coaches and certain, just kind of let them know, "Hey, so-and-so, so-and-so, and so-and-so." They're going to be participating in, uh, you know, a study hall, like a mandatory study hall for this amount of time. So the other piece is, you know, we're not just sending you for a day, we're gonna prescribe something that says, "You know what, we're gonna talk to the teacher." So the teacher becomes, you know, part of that conversation. "Hey, what skill does this, this student need? How long do you think it'll take to get that intervention, kind of get them up to speed?"
Okay.
And then obviously you have to have some buy-in from the parents, so that would also be an opportunity for us to connect with the parents, too.
Mm-hmm, um, let's see, um, what is the, um, what is this Wellness Day event that you're talking about?
Yeah, so we've, we've done that the last, um, you know, couple of years, and really it's an opportunity, it's a modified day. And really it's an opportunity, it's a modified day. So it's not a, it's not a day where, you know, so students are still engaged in academics in first part of the day. Um, you know, we play around the schedule a little bit in a sense where we modify some of the times in each block, shift them around so they can have lunch a little earlier. And then the second portion of the day, um, they'll engage in different workshops that are facilitated by themselves and the teachers. And so ahead of time, they come up with these different, uh, workshops that they wanna see as students. And then maybe our teachers wanna facilitate as educators. And really this is just kinda wrapped around with, um, you know, more around like, uh, team building, those types of activities, um, you know, in certain cases, uh, you know, it might, if, you know, weather permitting, we get outside and do some things, you know, we had like last year, we had a, you know, petting zoo, which was one of those.
A what?
Petting zoo.
A petting zoo?
Petting zoo.
Oh. Little animals.
Yeah.
Wow.
She'll come by next time.
That's it?
Hook you up with a pig.
They don't bite, do they? Yeah. Alright, I'll just see if I can, so, so it's, um.
But it was, it was a huge success. It was actually something that the, the students, um, you know, requested some time ago. Um, not only in person, but through different surveys and things like that. Um, I kinda think it was, you know, I hate bringing this up, but it was kind of coming off the heels of, of COVID and things like that. And it's like, what, how can we engage our students? Students loved it so much, uh, we try to make sure that we implement that, um, you know, each year, at least once.
Okay. Now, on page nine, I just had a question on the number of, um, it's, um, it said on science. Oh, that, uh, I guess I'm wrong. Let's see, is this the revised I had?
So that was one of the, um, revised.
Oh.
Pages because, um, last year, if you remember, we had a negative two for an FTE under high school. And it wasn't, um, clarified which position yet, once the school year ended last year. So you'll see a difference in that one and also literacy. Because those are the two FTEs that Dr. Parker reduced out of last year's budget.
So it was, there was a drop in the number of science teachers. It was, uh, actual twenty-three, twenty-four. And, and so it, it's not, for this, this year, it's, you have thirteen science teachers. And again, your proposal thirteen, I, so what I had before had the numbers wrong.
Right, yes.
So I'm sorry for that. Now, um, uh, the, um, could you go over the student, uh, acad- athlete academic monitoring system? Is, that's just, you just talked about that?
It was, it's similar.
Exactly the same thing, right? Uh, and so.
So for clarity, the question you just asked, it will be answered under interscholastic athletics, correct?
That's right, I'm sorry. Okay, we haven't moved to that point yet.
We have not, sir.
Okay.
For clarity, we are in the high school.
Okay.
And then we're gonna go to CTE and then we're gonna go to interscholastic athletics.
Okay, let me see. Uh, let's see here if I have any other.
As Mr. Pennels is gathering his thoughts, is there any other questions in the boardroom or online? Looking online, I see no hands raised, no hands raised. Looking to my left, any other questions? If not, Mr. Pennels?
Yeah, um, I guess I already got my first one, let's see. Um, uh, the second question I have is under, um, uh, the, uh, you had a, you had an item here. First item, collaborating with UConn Medical and our athletic trainer. Could you explain what that collaboration is about?
Yeah, that is under interscholastic athletics, Mr. Pennels.
Next portion.
This question for you.
No, he said it's under.
That's under the, that's under the athletic director.
Oh, we're, we're still on.
Even though he's at the, at the days here. He's at the days. And it might be a little confusing, so let me, let me, let me provide some clarity and, and bring us back in order. Is there any other ques- general questions about the high school?
Unrelated to athletics.
Unrelated to athletics or CTE. I am hearing none. I'm looking online, I am hearing none. That means we are done with the high school portion of. Alright, so now we are proceed, proceeding to continue, um, CTE. Any questions about CTE, which is on page, make sure I, I get us, I believe it's in the. Yes, page twelve, twelve and thirteen. Any questions in regards to page twelve and thirteen? Mr. President?
Uh, yeah, on the dual enrollment for the CCSU courses, and I'm also kind of looking at Dr. Haiti here too, um, where does that stand? I believe there were certain courses that were gonna be taught at Windsor High, that were Windsor High courses. And the second phases of a couple of those classes were gonna be CCSU, still at Windsor High, but CCSU. Where do we stand? Did we have those classes?
We did not have those classes this year, um, not due to, uh, Windsor High. We were prepared, see, the dual enrollment, they actually at UConn, they call it dual enrollment. At CCSU, they call it concurrent enrollment. We get corrected very often in our meetings with CCSU. Um, it is new for them. It, this is a new program for them. They have had, um, students, high school students go to CCSU to take classes before, but teaching them at Windsor High. Um, Ms. Feynman and myself and Dana Fudge have sat in numerous meetings, um, with CCSU. We should be all set to go with three courses next year, um, in our manufacturing and, or two, three in our manufacturing and architecture pathways. So we're very excited to roll those out. We're still working out the kinks with registration. I mean, we've had a partnership with UConn for a long time, so this is a new partnership for us. Um, and we have, our teachers are all set to go. Um, our curriculum's pretty much been approved. We have a couple of little minor tweaks, but, um, we're working with them and, you know, the registration stuff, figuring all, all of those little pieces out, but we should be all set to go and those are all in our program of studies as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking online, I'm seeing no hands. Looking back to my left, any questions for CTE? I am seeing and hearing none.
I just, if I have maybe a comment versus a question. Um, I'm very excited about these courses and the opportunities that we have and the pathways that we have for students. So we always talk about, we want students to have a, to know, have a plan for college, for the military, for, for going to, into the workforce. And this, um, I think is, is very meaningful to really have a true pathway and not put down students who decide that college might not be for them and to have real careers and career paths in classes, whether it's firefighting uh, or some of the manufacturing classes. So I applaud the work that's been done in the district in Windsor High. Thank you.
Our hearts and minds clear for CTE? Next will be interscholastic sports. Mr. Fulton? Um, any questions for the athletic director?
Right, I would just have that one question that's left. I think it's under, um, major schoolwork. First bullet item is the increase, uh, excuse me. And we got a switch page just here. It says, um, what, what call, what's the collaboration with UConn Medical and the athletic trainer involved?
We're excited about that. We had, we got an, we got some input from a former employee here, um, between myself, Dr. Hill and, um, Dr. Parker. And we, um, explored that avenue and we ended up thinking it would be a good fit for us. And the reasons we thought that was a good fit for us was number one, while we had a team, uh, a, a, a team physician that was overseeing our kids, um, that particular team doctor couldn't come to our school. So UConn has the doctor coming once a week to see our kids. And that opens up a lot of possibilities for students who are injured, um, those who are, who are concussed. You know, it's very difficult to get in front of a doctor on a, on a daily basis. So we thought that that was like a huge selling point. It's worked out really well so far. Our kids are in constant, the trainer who was now, we hired a trainer as well. She's new, um, so that's been helpful to her too, to be around somebody in her profession. While I, I know a lot about athletics, I, I know a little bit about the body. So it's very help, I can help her organize and do things, but those specific, um, trade, um, marks that athletic trainers and doctors go through, I couldn't help her with that. So UConn is there helping her with that as well. And in addition to that, providing her an opportunity to be work, to work with some of their trainers as well. So that's very helpful to Katie. So that's why we feel like, and so obviously she brings all that information back to us and it gets, it gets brought to our kids.
And do we, I assume we pay, pay for these services?
We do not.
Oh, that's too bad.
So we can't spend, can't spend money.
It's a great thing, right? We, we do not. So it's, it's an opportunity for them to, so it's a fellow, so the fellow has to get a certain amount of hours as well. Fellow, a doctor's in the fellowship, so he gets to come in and it's a win-win for everyone.
So UConn Medical, what's in it for them? They just get experience?
Their fellow, the doctor gets to come in and get his hours as well.
Students come in, get credit and it's a win-win.
They can have, you do your residency and if you want private privacy to a fellowship. So that's what I was gonna ask, is it, was it a resident or a fellow?
Might have to have Xavier come back from Springfield College. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I was gonna ask you if it was a resident doctor, a fellow, or someone who already graduated that wanted some experience that was gonna enter into that. But you already started talking about it, so thank you.
Any other questions for the athletic director? I see Mr. Halleck and then Mr. President in that order. Mr. Halleck?
Uh, thank you. Uh, uh, two questions. Um, I see that, um, um, there's a, there's a, um, an increase in students participating in sports. I just wanted to know which, uh, which, uh, sports or programs are seeing that and need additional, uh, coaches? So we have an increase at the middle school, like last year, which was, you know, phenomenal, is, um, you know, I hate to use the phrase because it's coming from somebody, but more money, more problems. So the more kids you have participating, the more money you have to put into it. And so we had a hundred and sixty kids who, who came out for track and field last year. And so we had to get, we had to cut some of those kids. And, but even with cutting them, we still kept an exorbitant amount of kids. So we wanna get as many, uh, kids participating as well. And so we had to add a coach there. So we also added boys volleyball and, and that's been an increase as well. So those are the two sports right now that, uh, and, and actually we had an increase in boys soccer. Uh, we, we, for the last four years, we haven't had a freshman team. This was the first year we had a freshman team since I've been here. So we have a freshman team, we have three levels of boys soccer. And how many coaches are you, are you expecting to hire? I don't know if I understand your question, sir. I, I, you're like. So two, yeah, so it would be two. It would be two, two, one for at the middle school level and then one at the, at the high school level, which, which boys soccer. And then I was just curious, um, on how you're playing, uh, on, um, on trying to increase, uh, partici- participa- participation in boys hockey. I, I do know it is an expensive, uh, sport, so I was just curious about that. Right, so we, we have kids in town who would like to play. So we co-op with Farmington, Lewis Mills and Avon. So we wanted, we do have kids who wanna participate. The bigger piece is because you have four district towns, sometimes we don't, we're not represented as much as those kids would like to be represented. So they don't get the playing time they want. So they go back to the junior league. So we're trying to make, we're trying to get them, if they come, if they go back to juniors, to come up and stay. Um, so that's just a com- this is a combination of, um, of, of speaking to parents. I've had conversations with parents, trying to persuade them to, 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 to kinda follow the course. I think the coaches are really good there. I think they'll, they'll work with our kids and get them to where they need to be. So the bigger, the bigger piece is the persuasion of getting kids to stay and continue to, to fight through, you know, struggle, right? I think some of our kids, um, when they meet that struggle, they kind of don't know how to fight through it. And so that's the, the, the stance I'm taking and trying to get to the fight through the struggle, so they can get to the end.
Mr. Halleck?
Okay, very good. Uh, that's all for today. Thank you very much.
Mr. President and then Ms. Cantor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, one of, one of the questions I had was actually, um, I had written it in and I got a written answer, but I think, um, I'm gonna still ask kind of part of it. And it has to do with, it's on page eleven, event supervision. We went from in twenty-three, twenty-four, a line item of in the seventies. This year's budget only had twenty-six and you're projecting the need for seventy thousand for next year. And I've gotten the whole list of all the different things that comprise that. And I see why it would, it would be going up. Um, is, is, are, are we okay with then for this year? Is, are you trying to?
Let me, um, jump in, Chris, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
So, um, yeah, so, um, myself, um, Mr. Fulton and Dr. Parker already met about this. Um, and it has been, it's not new this year, it's not new last year. Over the past, you know, four plus years, we've just seen a, you know, little by little. And now it's definitely a significant cost. So for this year, it will be over budget, but Dr. Parker knows that and is absorbing that deficit by his whole Windsor High School budget.
Potentially save money, so I wanted, just wanted to understand it, why it was there.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. Um, I hate to date myself, but a long time ago, Loomis Chafee used to have an ice skating rink and kids used to skate there. Do they still have that now?
Skating? I don't know about that.
Ice skating?
I do know that there was a, it was a, uh, um, collaboration between Loomis Chafee and the hockey team at the school.
Right, there were other towns that used to go there and ice skate, they used to compete.
Yeah.
So, okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions for the athletic director? Alright, I know I see a lot of the teams fundraising from time to time, whether it's for, I, I, I can't even answer to what a lot of the fundraising that they use. I don't know what they use it for. Is there a need where we can supplement that in the budget and they can focus more on the athletics as well as the academics, rather than also have to focus on fundraising?
So what's important to note is that every team gets the necessary equipment and uniforms that they need. It's very important to know. They all get what's necessary. They need basketballs, they get basketballs. They need golf balls, they need golf balls. I think what happens is, is, you know, people want, the, the students want these extra, I want sweat suits. I want, you know, we wanna get, you know, sweatshirts, yes. And so that's where the, the fundraising come, comes in.
Okay.
Yeah, they want the swag, yeah. So they want, they want the swag, so they go and they fundraise. It's not in the, it's not in the budget for that stuff.
Okay, well, I, I can understand why they do it. They, they perform quite well, all of our teams.
Mm-hmm.
And I can understand why they wanna have a little swag to them. Think they've earned it. So I, um, but I get it. But, thank you.
Okay, you can make a contribution to them.
We probably do.
I, I typically do.
Your money, though.
It's my money. I, I'm a cheerful taxpayer in town, Paul, cheerful.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have continuing education.
Thank you, um, Windsor High and team. And we will call up at this time, Ms. Mayella Aguirre Earnest to talk about, um, the adult ed program. She's the adult ed coordinator. Continuing education, should I say, excuse me.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
The, the committee, we have the continuing education piece before us. Are there any questions? I'm looking online first. I don't see any hands, so I will look to my left. Are there any questions?
No.
Any questions? We are discussing for people online, pages fifteen and sixteen. Asking one last time, online and in the boardroom, are there any questions? And I saw Mr. President raise his hand, so I recognize you, sir.
It, it's really a comment, is that okay?
Mr. President.
Um, I, I just really wanna applaud you for what's going on with continuing education at a time that as important as this is, the different alternate ways that we can, um, have students off and. often older folks as well, not just young students, um, uh, be successful. And, uh, I was very touched by some of the presentations at one of the graduations last year, about some of the hardships that people had to overcome, but their willingness to be educated. One person said, you know, I've, I've got my grandchildren, I helped my grandchildren get educated, my children get educated, and now it was kind of time for me to be able to do that, and how proud they are. And to have these alternate pathways, because people are in different positions about how they can access this. So thank you very much for what you and, and we do under continuing education.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Questions? I am hearing and seeing none from the virtual world and in the board. I will echo Mr. President's comments as well. So thank you very much for all you and your department do, thank you so much.
If I may, may I read a few highlights?
Dr. Hill?
Thank you, thank you. So on September first, we received our award letter from the State Department of Education informing us that our four-year federal grant proposal was approved. Our program will receive forty-five thousand one hundred per year to provide expanded services, including a career navigator, an evening digital literacy class, an integrated English language civics class, a fourth NEDP advisor assessor. I'm happy to announce that three positions were filled this month. Part of this grant will also cover funding to continue to offer our successful GED bootca- bootcamp. The role of the career navigator is to work within our organization to create an overarching plan for transition to careers, including transition to post-secondary education and/or training, work with the community, employers, community resources, work with the local workforce investment boards, share information about employment, training, and other career-related opportunities. Our career navigator that we hired has over seven years' experience working within the American Job Center and collaborating with our North Central Workforce Board. He will work with our students, especially those obtaining a high school credential, to further support their career pathways, including one-on-one career counseling focused on the student's individual interest and exploring career paths, connecting them with job opportunities and access to resources for career advancement, including employment in, in-demand industries and occupation that lead to economic self-sufficiency and/or training in post-secondary education. Career workshops will be provided in groups to address employability, soft skills, and resume writing, CT higher account registration, and FAFSA submissions, to name a few. I am confident that the addition of a career navigator to our program will increase student placement into the workforce, post-secondary education, training programs, and increase our retain- our retention rate, rates. The addition of our evening digital literacy instructors to provide additional digital literacy hours for our learners to gain essential technology skills, which will enable them to navigate and thrive in an increasingly digital world. This class will cover fundamental digital skills such as using computers, browsing the internet, understanding online safety, and resume writing. The North Star Digital Learning Platform will be used to meet the diverse needs of adult learners, many of whom may be returning to education after a long break or have limited prior experience with technology. The goal is to build confidence and competence in using digital tools for personal, professional, and educational advancement and helping students stay connected, informed, and competitive in today's digital society. Offering integrated English literacy and civics education, IELCE for short, to our students aims to assist English language learners in their roles as parents, workers, and citizens through integrated civics and English language literacy acquisition instruction as described in the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act for workforce preparation and workforce training. Students participating in this class will improve their English language abilities so they can participate more fully in their community. Sample topics will include US history and government, citizenship rights and responsibilities, information on the naturalization process, housing, childcare, school systems, financial systems, community and home safety, emergencies, health, transportation, and town services, including the library. This semester, we will offer our basic life support certification course, which is offered through our enrichment program to students enrolled in this class as part of the health and emergencies curriculum. The goal of hiring an additional national external diploma advisor and assessor is to expand our service to take on more clients so they can earn their Windsor High School adult diploma upon successful completion. As you can see, this federal grant has allowed us to expand our services. Together, these services create a holistic, holistic support system empowering students to succeed in both their education and careers. Last year, we increased our GED attainment by forty percent, and part of that was due to offering the GED bootcamp. Our next bootcamp will take place in May after our spring semester ends. Through our partnership through Cummins Engine Company, we will provide a tutor for our bootcamp. The goal is to increase attainment of the GED from seven to nine graduates. Our enrollment has increased tremendously, last year we served a hundred and nine students for the whole year, and just this fall, we served a hundred and six. As of yesterday, we are serving a hundred and twelve students for the spring semester. So far, we have, um, five high school completion students, three in the GED and two in the NEDP. We have several students in their final stages of GED or NEDP and are projecting fourteen graduates for this fiscal year. I would like to take this opportunity to sincerely thank the cabinet for recognizing the growth of our program and providing us with additional space to accommodate, accommodate all of our students. This dedicated learning space will play a key role in supporting our continued expansion and allow us to better serve our students and help them reach their educational career goals. Today was the first day of our Many Stars Drop-In Enrichment Program made possible through the collaboration with the Family Resource Center, Windsor Youth Service Board, and Windsor Social Service Kinship Program. The goal of this program is to provide respite to eligible guardians enrolled or participating in one or more of the services listed, as well as to provide, provide opportunities for these adults to participate in activities that promote self-sufficiency. This enrichment program is held on Tuesdays and Wednesdays from eight forty-five to twelve forty-five in the All Purpose Room here at LP Wilson. Yep. Yep, that's, yep. One last thing, as we continue to navigate the changes in federal immigration laws, we are deeply aware of the impact these changes are having on our students and program. Many of our learners are facing uncertainty, certainty, and fear, and it is our responsibility to ensure we provide them with a safe and welcoming learning environment. In these trying times, I strongly urge the Board of Education to support our school by providing the necessary resources and establishing clear protocols to address emergencies related to these issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for the board, we are on item number six, district policy and planning, which is pages twenty-six and twenty-seven. This is superintendent's budget, and this is also the area where we operate as a board as far as what we do as far as professional development and that, and et cetera, et cetera. Dr. Hill, recognizing you, sir.
Oh, um.
You all set?
So I'm, as you guys see, this is zero, so I've added nothing to my budget. And as you said so succinctly, Mr. Chair, this is where the board, there's, there's just zero increase in this.
All right. Looking online, looking to my left, any questions from the board in regards to pages twenty-six and twenty-seven? Hearing and seeing none. All right, thank you, Dr. Hill, next will be employee personnel services. That is on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Are there any questions for Dr. Hill or his team in regards, in regards to what's on pages twenty-eight and twenty-nine for employee personnel services? Looking online, I see no hands. I am looking to my left to see any hands. I am seeing and hearing.
Sure, just, um, uh, I was, the frontline management system, can you tell us what that is? Frontline management system?
Yep, so frontline is our, um, hiring software. So it's, it, um, people apply, um, we post our applications out and people can apply online and it's a software system that, um, takes the applications and we have a few different modules within it. So it's a hiring, onboarding, attendance, and we also hook it now to time and attendance. So it feeds into our payroll system through our time clocks.
Okay, so it just, it's not just at the hiring time, you're saying?
No, that, that is how it started, but then we've, yeah, we've boosted it throughout the past, you know, maybe five years or so. So it's, um, it's pretty invaluable to the operations.
Is it one of the expensive licenses on that?
Yeah, I mean, it's one, uh, yeah, it, that and Munis are, is really the operational part of the district, those two platforms.
If I could just throw in, Mr. Panels, yes, it is, it's integral, as Ms. Batchelder just said, expensive, as you just said. Um, but what happens, when we go to these conferences and these, um, companies, like, they just buy each other. So you may have, save money by having this product for this, that product for that, this product for that. Um, and then someone like a Tyler, that's one of the big ones, they're gonna, within a year or so, you're gonna see they bought that company. So then you just end up buying across their platform.
Oh.
So you, they knock out the small people. Somebody will come up with a nice program, I know Mr. Madison would appreciate that, someone will design a platform. It's usually some small designer, and, you know, how could they resist not selling to the big company making a bunch of money? And of course, then we pay for it.
Thank you.
I see no hands online. I see no hands raised here. So without objection, we will close employee personnel services. We will go to fiscal management, so now fiscal management, Dr. Hill, if I'm correct, that's page thirty, and there's multiple facets to that particular piece. You got fiscal management, you got fiscal services, and I believe there's another site, which is transportation and safety. So for the board, I mean, excuse me, I'm so sorry, for the committee, we are, um, dealing with strictly fiscal management this evening, with the understanding that we know we're gonna have more discussions and depth conversations with people here to discuss transportation, fiscal plan, and the other stuff. So I'll yield for a moment. Dr. Hill, are we prepared to do fiscal management this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so we're gonna have, Ms. Batchelder's gonna cover fiscal management and we'll save the other ones. I was, I was thinking, as you, you know, looking at the time, like, wow, she could cover the other ones. But she is more prepared to just cover the fiscal management tonight.
That'll give us a time to have some brief debriefing before we end the meeting, so.
And it may be new questions people develop, so.
So for tonight, for the public, for fiscal management, we're only discussing page thirty in regards to fiscal management, and we're discussing site seventy-seven only, correct?
No, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, yeah, sorry.
So I want to make sure.
All fiscal management, so it's financial management, fiscal management, safety services, and people transportation. Let's have it, I'm ready for you.
Eddie's, 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 Eddie's.
We are at ease.
Eddie's.
On your, on your feet.
So I just want to make sure.
Was he ever in the military? I never heard Sergeant say at ease that many times. The.
I'm not in the military, but you know, it's, it's part of, part of me, so I'm a highway express.
Kind of the fire department, running skills.
The main thing is the contract.
All right, I need consideration for, I need consideration from the committee. So right now, on tonight's docket, we have fiscal management. On the docket for February eleventh, action item number two is transportation. I am asking the committee to consider moving transportation to this evening. So therefore, we'll be able to take care of pages thirty and thirty-one, as well as thirty-two, which will take care of sites seventy-seven, seventy-nine, and eighty. Is there any objection of the committee taking on transportation this evening? Is there any objection? Looking to those that are virtually, any objection? I am hearing and seeing none, any objection from the room? Hearing no objections, seeing no, just no objections, so ordered. At this time, the committee will entertain, um, today's number eight and February eleventh's number two, which is transportation. Any questions for site seventy-seven, seventy-nine, and eighty? Any questions? Mr. Panels?
Yes, I, I think it's the, the contract.
So, yes, all questions will be through Dr. Hill to Ms. Batchelder, please.
Whoa, boy, we're already getting clear here.
Yeah, very, very clear.
So the main driver in this is the, is the revised, um, contract for the, is, is that right? I mean, is, this is from the, from DATCO?
So you're talking the transp- on page thirty-two?
Excuse me, I'm on the transportation here.
Site eighty, Mr. Panels?
Yeah.
Yes, site eighty, please.
Yes, so this is DATCO transportation, as well as our special ed transportation, which is, um, through Haven.
Yeah, the, uh, uh, yeah, the diesel was so-so, diesel increase, but, uh, uh, so, and what was the reason for this? This is about a ten percent?
So diesel has not come in yet. We don't ever get, um, our actual lock-in price until, um, usually around February, March time. Gas, because that's on a fiscal year, gas is on a calendar year. So we were able to lock in on gas, and that came a lot lower than projected. So that's the actual price, the two dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, um, now, the, but the contract, now what, what was the reason? I mean, our regular ed, take, take the regular ed, okay, so that's two, two mi- two and a half million went to two million eight or something like this, something like that. So it's a quarter of a million dollar increase. You know, that's a ten percent, what's the, what's the big driver there? I mean, did they get a ten percent raise?
No, DATCO is, this is, it's a locked-in contract that was approved by the board a few years ago, and it was an increase at this point in time of three point nine percent.
Three point nine percent?
But that is the.
What's the three point nine percent?
I'm sorry?
What, what's three point nine percent? I'm, I'm looking at the regular ed service contract, two five five, two million five five six, versus it goes up to two million eight one zero.
So you're looking at site eighty, and you're looking at the increase in the cost force to run the buses, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, right?
That's part of the contract, correct?
Right.
That's, that's, that's per, per contract.
Right, it's like, it's about three hundred thousand for the, which is pretty low compared to the whole.
Which is a ten percent increase? So.
No. So regular ed, so the total, under the regular ed line item is our day-to-day to and from school. So that is all of our, our big buses that bring in kids, elementary tier, middle tier, high school tier. So, um, two years ago, if you remember, we reduced about four hun- I think it was four hundred thousand dollars in our transportation line item because of lack of drivers and we cut buses.
Okay.
So through the past year, we've added, if we're able to get drivers, we have been trying to add buses back when need be. So the contract is actually for seventy-seven buses, we only operate around sixty. So anytime they are able to get another driver, we add a bus. So that number is a little fluid, but that's really the. So that number is a little fluid, but that's really, the, the driving cost to Transportation right now is under our special ed line item due to just increased vehicles to, to and from, either outplacements or even within the district based on student need. I'm sorry?
It goes a million, on the, on the special ed, you have it going from 2,622 to 2,773, which is not that huge. But, but on the regular ed, you...
But that incorporates, so all of that incorporates, so regular ed entails all of our magnet school, our non-pubs, our late bus, our midday runs, our additional morning runs for pre-k,
Okay.
After-school events. It's, I can get you a more, like, a detailed listing to explain this further.
Would you do that? I mean, I guess we're not getting anywhere.
Yes.
That will be on one of the colorful sheets for the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to the group?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. President?
So, it's been bad that we've, they've actually been having more drivers because now it drives up the cost because we have more routes. You'd rather lower the cost by combining routes?
Yeah, but that's...
And having kids drive for an hour.
Yeah, and it's such a, I mean, the principles, I feel like I'm getting like daggers from like O.E. and Paquonic right now because tho, those two schools just get beat up. And the amount of money we're paying for bus monitors is outrageous. We're over like $100,000 just for bus monitors because of the number of kids on those big buses. They're three, they're, you know, five, six, seven-year, I know, see, they're both shaking their head at me right now. It's constant, it's, it's not a fun experience. Like, when we can add a bus, we're adding it at one of those schools.
All right.
I mean, some buses, we have two monitors on, just to, because there are just a lot of kids in one little space.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? Looking online, I see no hands. Looking to the left, my left, I see no questions. So with that being said, we have satisfied our agenda for this evening, but I wanna make sure I give each board member an opportunity to say something briefly about where we are and be prepared for the next meeting. With that being said, I will recognize first, Mr. Halleck. Any comments?
I think we're following Robert's rules, is that the idea?
Yeah, because...
All right, then it's up to someone to raise their hands if they wanna make a comment, right?
No, 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 so I'm, I'm giving everybody a chance, I'm going in order.
I thought everybody had a chance because we're up here.
So everyone has spoken. I'm giving everybody a chance. If no one wants to have a final comment, then I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and we can leave. What I was trying to do is give everybody an opportunity to say, have a last say, and then move on. If there's no, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second. Motion made by Mr. Panels, seconded by Mr. Fury, for adjournment. Any discussion, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I see aye for Mr. Halleck. Mr. Wooliston?
Yeah.
Mr. Wooliston? Mr. King?
Uh, yeah, just one, sorry, one quick comment, I do just wanna thank the chairman for having such a efficient meeting, this is awesome, and I really appreciate it. Before we come to these, to make them go so smoothly, but yes, aye, thank you.
Mr. Wooliston? Mr. King votes aye. Mr. Wooliston, Mr. Wooliston. With that being said, the vote will carry 7-0-0. We are adjourned at 7:39 PM. Have a good evening.